You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 1st meeting for the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Michigan City City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. I would like to call to order if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, silence all of your electronical devices, and a moment of prayer.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a mission, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk on roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter. Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Maldonar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Priszbalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And I was notified that Councilman Coulter would not be in attendance for this evening's meeting. Moving on to the agenda for approval of minutes for regular council hybrid Zoom, March 18th, 2025, may I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second the approval.
I have a motion by Councilman Priszbalinski and a second by Councilwoman Maldonar. All those in favor by acknowledging aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Next, on the agenda, we will be having a presentation with Ms. Mickey Webb, the Executive Director of the La Porte County Drug Free Partnership, on the proposed development of a certified recovery residence facility in La Porte County and partner leadership recovery team. Welcome. Good evening.
Members of the council and the community, thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. I'm Dr. Mickey Webb. I'm with the La Porte County Drug Free Partnership, where I'm the Executive Director. But more importantly, I'm a community member, a citizen. This is the place where I've lived, worked, played, and prayed for the majority of my professional career. What I'd like to talk to you today is about La Porte County. We're located on a high-intensity drug trafficking area. What that is, is that's a federal designation, which places La Porte County at a greater risk. Our La Porte County Coroner reports 37 overdose deaths in 2024, but that number is underreported. The reason being is, to be classified as an overdose, it has to be autopsied. And to be autopsied, that costs money. Unfortunately, La Porte County does not have any recovery residences, whereas Porter County and St. Joe County have several. Our La Porte County jail, the capacity allows for 368 inmates. The average census for 2024 was 372, at a cost of over $17,000 per inmate. Translating that and doing the math, we're looking at roughly 6.3 million for those inmates to incarcerate them. A recovery residence, what we're proposing, is a two-year facility. Differ differing, and this would be operated under the auspice of the Indiana Department of Mental Health and Addiction, and through the La Porte County Drug Free Partnership, a 501(c)(3) organization. It's a not-for-profit, and what that means, we've been in existence for over 35 years. Because of that, it positions us to be better able to access state, federal grants, private funding, and other financial resources, so that we can leverage and braid different funding streams. No funding entity wants to be all-in on something. But for this, we're operating under State Department of Mental Health, and we feel it's important, and from the onset. We're looking at sustainability, because we don't want to continue to come back to the council, to the county council. As a Level III residence, once certified by the state, we qualify for Recovery Works funding, and that reimburses a good portion of the costs or the operational expenses of the facility. I think everyone here in this room, members of the council, members of our community, have been impacted by the issue of substance use, with it being a drug addiction, an alcohol issue, with a friend, a family member, a coworker, a colleague, an employee. And as my former colleagues in Michigan City schools, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Maldonar, Mr. Beatry, Ms. Lee, you know all too well the impact it's had on children in Michigan City and the families that we serve. I think Ms. Tillman also can feel the impact of those children that are not provided for, because of families who might struggle with a parental addiction. And we don't see addiction as a moral failing. We see it as a disease. This disease impacts every socioeconomic status, every race, every ethnicity, every culture, every gender, every gender orientation or sexual identity. But what the research shows is, it disproportionately impacts those that are not able to get the support and services that they need. If you're familiar with NAA, you know that what they teach you is, people who go into rehab or go into jail, once they're out, they need to change their playground and playmates. They need to change their environment. Otherwise, our jail becomes the revolving door, at the cost of the $17,000 per inmate, per annual cost per inmate. We're proposing that certified Level III residents, we're up to 20 males from La Porte County, and that's important, because recovery residences are in short supply. And I think once one opens, people flock from all over the state and from outside of the state. But we want to be very specific, that if we're providing localized resources, that those resources be used to serve our citizens. But also that those citizens will be very, very carefully vetted with background searches, that it's not a facility that would, individuals who might have an issue with sex offenses be allowed to enter into that site, but that these would be referred by the Director of Treatment from La Porte County Jail, Tyra Robinson Walker. It would be referred by the courts, by area judges, and it would be referred by rehab facilities. They would then have an intake as they come in, and they know what they're getting into, because it's a two, it would be up to two years, where they're subject to random drug screenings, periodic assessments, to measure their progress. Because for those of us who have been on this committee, and Mr. Priszbalinski was, from the onset, I think, started with, and is familiar with some of the concepts, is aware that we want this to succeed, and that everybody who has been working this and developing this program has been doing it as volunteers. It will operate in accordance with state and national standards, under the oversight of the state of Indiana. We're looking at sustainability of the operating budget out of Recovery Works funding, the impact on the neighborhood. As I pulled up Zillow, and this is something that presently we were able to access through GIS, these are the overdoses presently, the most recent GIS data for overdoses.
Ms. Webb.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you indicate what, where this area is located, so that the public and the council is aware?
Yes. I think if you're looking, and it's kind of hard to see from there, you're looking at the area immediately surrounding the proposed facility, which is located in the area of the former St. Anthony's Hospital. Thanks, Tommy.
Where are you?
No.
The apartment's going to the old St. Anthony's, right there, or the facility's going to go.
Okay.
The law batch, three, the law batch and an screen.
Thank you. So you're looking at the things that look like a needle, and those are overdose calls to EMS. I also looked on Zillow to see what property values or what homes are selling for in that area, and at least their listing, according to Zillow, in the $200,000 range. The proposed construction budget, right now, and who knows with tariffs, and if you've ever built a house or done any remodeling projects, you know that things often cost more than what you expect, is presently a $3.1 million construction budget. We can assume that, you know, putting that nice of a facility in that area will enhance that particular area. Next slide, please. This is a schematic of what the proposed facility might look like on the outside. It is modeled after a recovery residence in Valparaiso on Union Street. We have a tour arranged for Thursday, but they're more than willing to have anyone come at any time. We can schedule it for you, or anyone who wants to see what that would look like. That's the exterior of that home, but for Michigan City, because of the water table, it did have to become a two-story residence. The Valparaiso home is a walkout, lower level. Next slide, please. Our next steps include opening it up for a tour of the respite house in Valpo, scheduling town hall meetings, so that community members can ask questions, because I know that sometimes the unknown raises fear, and then allowing questions and answers from the general public. And I'm willing to meet with anyone over coffee, over a soda at McDonald's, to address these questions that may occur. We've looked at sustainability. We looked at the potential impact on the neighborhood, but more importantly, I think we're looking at the impact on lives saved. With 37 individuals who passed last year, I think that can make a huge difference for La Porte County. I will open it up for questions. We do have, have someone from Ton and Blank here, who would answer construction-related questions, which is not my forte. Thank you. But I can open it up for the council for questions.
Councilman Beatry.
I know you had a meeting earlier, and I wasn't able to attend that, so I have several questions, and maybe at that meeting you answered them, but I wasn't able to hear your answers. You mentioned that as a Level III reimbursement is possible, by who?
It's Recovery Works funding.
But is that federal or state?
It comes through the state.
And what are, are they reimbursing? Are they reimbursing salaries?
No, they are reimbursing the residence per day stay at a rate of approximately $30 per day. It would equate to about $900 per month, per resident. And those would be residents who would qualify for the Recovery Works funding.
Does that cover the entire amount you need for each person for that period of time?
What we're doing, and in this, we don't chart, we don't call it rent, we call it user fees, because if you have to evict someone, it's harder to evict than if you refer to it as a user fee. It covers their user fees for them staying at the facility.
Okay, and they are selected to go there.
Correct.
Do they have to stay there, or can they walk out whenever they want?
It is an open facility. There's policies and procedures. They've done their time, they've spent their time in a rehabilitation facility. They could live right next door to any one of us, but this is by choice, that they may be choosing to go into recovery residence for that additional layer of support, case management. Many times, they may not have transportation, they may have lost a job, underemployed, so they're forced to go back to live with family or friends. Those family and friends may be using, and it may not be supportive to the recovery process for them.
Are they, like, learning job skills while they're there?
They would have vocational skills, primarily case management and counseling, but job skills, if that is something. It would be mapped out into what I'm calling a recovery service plan, kind of a treatment plan, or an IEP if you're in education, so that everyone would have an individualized plan based on their needs. Maybe it's somebody who needs to get their GED. Maybe it's someone needing to get a driver's license. But to get them back on track, to become a contributing member of the community, to get them back on track of paying child support, maybe it's getting in a VOP program or an apprentice program, so that they can earn a gainful wage, not going back to the streets, and not going back to a situation where they might be engaging in illegal activity as a way of sustaining themselves.
Okay. And I think I'm about done here.
No, that's okay.
One of the slides said 20 male. Is there no way to deal with females?
At this, at this home, we're looking at strictly a male facility for our first home.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
In the future, maybe.
Down the road.
Okay.
You know, and we know the need is there. I know Judge Friedman, who is a significant leadership role on the committee, Judge Friedman has said she could fill four of these homes from day one, because the need is so great. And that is why I think we can be very selective on who we can accept into the home. We're not taking someone who just is going there just because they want housing. We want someone who is committed to the recovery process.
Now, I didn't see anything in there about money asked from the council. Is this, what exactly are you asking, or is this just informative?
At this point, it is informative. In the packet, we talked about the opioid settlement dollars. In the opioid settlement dollars, one of the core strategies is a recovery residence.
Okay.
And as we look at leveraging, braiding funding streams, we will be coming to the council and doing our ask.
Well, if you got Ton and Blank, you've got A-plus people you're dealing with.
Well, and to be honest, I have to give much props and a shout-out to Ton and Blank, because they are donating $90,000 in architectural and engineering fees, a substantial reduction in construction costs, securing the trade unions to donate. We're looking at in-kind contributions of almost, well, $971,000, $114,000 in property donation, a $750,000 contribution from the county council. So in putting these pieces together, we're trying to make it happen, but again, significant credit to Ton and Blank, who's been a valuable contributor to the Michigan City community for many, many years.
Councilman Nelson.
Do you mind mentioning this? I didn't actually hear.
Yes, sir.
Can anybody in the area, excuse me, can anybody from outside of La Porte County be admitted to this facility, or is it limited to just La Porte County residents?
We are, at this point, we're talking for La Porte County residents, because we're feeling that the dollars that have supported this have come from La Porte County. The need is great everywhere, and I would love to open it to everyone.
No.
But I think we, we want to be selective and honestly, take care of our own first.
Yes.
You know, if there was an opening and a bed was vacant, you know, we could probably be persuaded, but for the most part, I think La Porte County is where we're looking.
No, that's perfect. I just remember you saying about how you have the option to be selected.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure we were catering to the people that was around here.
Yes, and I think that what happens is, individuals who may come from a lower socioeconomic background, or who may struggle, be underinsured, unemployed or underemployed, they may not get access to resources. In La Porte County, there's 117 behavioral health providers per 100,000 people. No wonder I go home tired. But, which is much less than the state ratio of what it should be in terms of providers. So people aren't getting the help they need. But in the residence for two years, they'll have case management, they'll have peer support. We have Swanson Center, who has signed on WARE, which stands for We All in Recovery. They're contributing. 320 Recovery is giving in-kind support and donating 100, 100 free hours, and there's a cost value, I'm sorry, 1,000 free hours of services, at a cost value of $36,000. So again, putting all these pieces, we have letters of support and in-kind commitments from these individual organizations, and then letters of support from both Unity and United Way. We have submitted a proposal to the Health Foundation of La Porte, because we know they have access to resources, and that this is consistent with their strategic plan for Healthy Minds, and we are intending, you know, to serve adult males from La Porte County.
Councilman Priszbalinski.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of questions. My first question is, and it was on the PowerPoint, that you said you looked at potential, the potential impact of this, of being in that neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
And what was the findings? And if you do have findings, if you have written findings, and I'd like to have a report of that?
Okay, I don't have written findings. My, it was my observations based on Zillow, and then just looking at what happened with property in the Valparaiso area, in the immediate vicinity of the recovery house, two years post-opening. And in those homes, there was no negative impact on property values in that area.
Okay, and how does the program work with a resident? If I were to be a resident there, you know, do I come and go 24 hours a day?
There is a curfew, and there's policies that they follow. If your job, say, if you're working midnights, there would be allowances for that.
And what is the curfew hours? And if I'm going to leave at 2:00 in the morning and go somewhere, can I just walk out?
Mr. Priszbalinski, I don't have the answer to that question, because I know those policies are still being developed, but they'll be modeled after the state guidelines. To my knowledge, I know that Mr. Peters was at our last meeting. He has a policy manual, and I think that that is something that would still be in the works. We'd welcome your input on that, you know, and certainly, because I know that you're familiar with the community in that neighborhood, and welcome your input, but I know that we wouldn't be wanting people going out of the residence at 2:00 in the morning, just to be leaving, to go see their girlfriend.
Yeah, well, I, not so much for myself, because I-
Hi, I'm John Gilmore with Ton and Blank. Again, I am the construction expert. I'm not the recovery expert, but I can tell you the rules of the house, because my son has lived there.
Okay.
The one in Valpo. Okay, so my son has an addiction, so it's very close to me. So the rules are, you have to be there for a meeting and dinner every single night. You have to go to four meetings a week, okay, actual NA or AA meetings. Curfew is 10:00 PM. If you leave, as Mitch would say, who runs it, anybody can leave, you just can't come back. They're drug tested, I don't know, three, four times a week. Sometimes if they, you know, if they're at work from 6:00 to 6:00, then they got to come and get drug tested every day. So this is very tight, and they understand that they are there, it's a privilege to be there, and they will kick them out. Now, and then sometimes they come back, but they got to prove themselves.
I'm going to thank John for jumping in, because I didn't have that answer to that question, but it's an answer that I'm going to have to find the answer.
Okay.
Yeah, and as far as you said, if they leave during the night, they, they're not allowed to come back, so they're out of the program. Is that what happens, or do they have to come back and talk to the administrator to get back?
I don't know the particulars. I just know that if you go off the reservation, if you test positive, you're out.
Oh, and I'm not saying tested positive, I'm just saying, if I get up at 2:00 in the morning, and I just want to leave and go walk around the neighborhood or go somewhere.
They can't get back in, because you don't have a key.
Okay.
You're locked out.
All right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You just can't come and go. You're locked out.
You can't come and go, and they have cameras, and they know who comes and goes.
Until the morning, when they open back up, right, when the director is there, and then you got to answer to the director?
24 hours, there's, there's counselors in the house 24 hours a day. So they live there.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. If you leave at 2:00 in the morning, you decide you're coming back after you go for your little walk or whatever.
No. You're not allowed to leave. Yeah, and they have you on camera.
Okay, and you got to talk to the counselor to get back into the building.
Yeah, and figure out whether you're still in the program or not.
And the reason I'm asking these questions, I don't directly live in that neighborhood, but there are people here that do live in the neighborhood. The gentleman is here this evening, that lives right next door to this facility being built, so I'd like, I want to get these questions out, so the general public knows what's going on. Yeah.
And, and the one in Valpo, there's no violent offenders, can't be there if you're a violent offender.
Okay.
And obviously, you can't be on drugs or alcohol, because you're getting tested.
Right.
Three times a week.
Yeah.
May be the most sober house in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Counsel, was there anything else? Councilman Priszbalinski, so we can move on to the next council person to speak, to ask any questions in the half. Councilwoman Maldonar, please.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Webb, I want to thank you very much for coming here this evening and presenting to us an overview of what the program's going to look like, and I want to say that I am wholeheartedly behind this program, having been a clinical social worker in the past, and realizing that the greatest relapse rate is after somebody does leave an inpatient program, and then they, as you said, go back to their old neighborhood, their old family, their old playground. So I really like the aspect of this being a two-year program. I think by being in a really tight structure, like you've described, is going to spell success for a number of individuals in La Porte County. I had one question regarding if Medicaid, Medicare, or insurance in any way plays into your funding sources or not.
Insurance typically does not pick up recovery residences, but it would pick up costs of outpatient therapy.
Thank you.
Dr. Cora.
Thank you, Ms. President. I really don't have any questions, a couple of comments, having taken care of many patients over the years. Recidivism is very high in this group of patients, and this recovery residence helps to prevent recidivism. And I can tell you that over the years, there are people who probably would have been alive who are not alive today, because we didn't have facilities like this, you know. And I appreciate every, all the efforts all of you have done in putting this together and going to various stakeholders and trying to raise funding for this, and I think this is a much-needed service in the community, and I'll be very supportive of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cora.
Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Webb, thank you for being here, and thank you for your presentation. We've discussed it before, but could you remind everybody the statistics of the houses in Valpo or in other areas about local crime? If local crime is increased or decreased, or if it stays the same as these houses come in? I know that's a concern for the public.
I don't have that data, but I can find as much information on that for you and get back with you.
I guess I mean local crime from the specific house. Like, is there an increase in crime from the residents in the house in those areas?
I understand your question now. From the information we've received from the respite house in Valparaiso, I think the sheriff of Porter County spoke during the work group session, and what he shared was that in one year, there was one incident. So I think that was pretty remarkable.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, and as well, thank you for being here and for your second presentation. I attended the first workshop in regards to this, and back to one of the fun- And back to one of the funding questions, so you indicated that the federal funds regard from the opioids. What is or what would be the ask from the city of Michigan City?
Two hundred and fifty thousand is a dollar figure that we were talking about.
Also, would you be able to elaborate um, in regards to this particular location opposed to any other areas? Um, not so much in within the city, maybe on the outskirts of the city, of why is it that this particular area was selected? And if any, if there was ever any communications um, um, with our administrator, with the mayor in regards to any other locations that would have been more doable?
We looked at a variety of sites throughout La Porte County. Uh, the committee felt it was imperative that wherever the residence was located, because many of these individuals may not have transportation, that it needed to be on a bus route so that they could get to and from their employment. Um, and that was one of those reasons. We also had the opportunity because of Franciscan willing to donate property contingent on us securing the other dollars. Um, to be able to consider a build, they felt it was consistent with the mission of service and serving the community.
Okay, um, I would just like to take a couple of minutes um to open it up at this time for any public comments. Are there any public comments at this time regarding this specific topic of discussion? Please keep in mind to state your name and your address and public comments are limited to three minutes.
Real Two Gladys Street. I, I feel this is a good thing, uh. When I worked at Alice Chalmers in La Porte back in the seventies and eighties, I had a drinking problem myself. And a young man came to me one night before we got off of work. And it was on a Easter weekend and we had an ice storm that night. And I told him it wasn't safe to go out doing that. And he went anyway. And this young man just had a new baby born. I don't know why he was out on a thousand north, but he broadsided the tree out there and killed himself. He lived on the other side of La Porte on thirty five, so I don't know why he was out there. But after that happened, that was the end of my drinking career. And the union appointed me alcohol and drug program for the union. And they had a guy appointed for this company. And they, they would give them one chance. And we, we used the old Memorial Hospital to put them up in. And I think I put like five or six guys through that system while I was there. And Alice Chalmers co- closed in eighty-three. So that ended that, but I did hopefully help some. And the drug problem now, I didn't have many drug problems, I had the alcohol problems there to go through. But now it's even worse. My granddaughter's stepson, he, he was in La Porte County Jail for it for quite a while. They released him, he's homeless. He's living in a tent out there behind the dollar store. And I don't think he's got off of the drugs.
Thank you.
There's a lot of homeless people on the drugs and need, need help. And, and a lot of people on alcohol.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, this is Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I'm a hundred percent for this. This is right in my neighbor, I walk by this site all the time. Uh, to, as far as I'm concerned, we're not getting anything that we have already in the past. For years, they had the rehab unit and when St. Anthony Hospital was existence was on the seventh floor. That's obviously gone now, uh, back in, back in the nineties, the old Garfield Elementary School at Eleventh and Ohio. That was packed, prisoners' community together. When the city acquired that property, packed left, went into the Masonic Lodge building, they're not there anymore. So, the, our, our orders does call for group homes and it does call for, for daycare centers. My sister had a daycare center at the opposite end of the lot, she closed last year, moved over to the Boulevard. But, you know, it's like, like Dr. Webb said, this is on the bus route, they'll have sewer and water, uh, the, uh, you know, this, I think this is just an idea that I want, I want that, that's the old St. Anthony height to be redeveloped. I don't want that to stay as a greenfield site for the rest of our lives like other hospital. Porter Memorial, they tore down their hospital in two thousand, that remains by like a twelve hour greenfield site right off of their downtown. Uh, uh, La Porte Hospital, they're, they're still, really haven't given a site plant, plan for them. I know, uh, uh, the old St. Mary Mercy Hospital in Gary, you know, that, they never tore that hospital down. It's the hospital where Michael Jackson was born. But I, I really want this to go through and I hope you support this a hundred percent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Public comment?
My name is Tom Nazemec, I'm a lifelong resident of Michigan City. Uh, sixty-five years on Ann Street. My property would be directly next door to the proposed uh center. And I appreciate the work of Dr. Webb and, and uh, Tunnel Blank. And I do think we need a, a program like this. I just wonder if there wouldn't be a better location. Uh, you're plopping it in the middle of an old Michigan City neighborhood. A lot of families have young children, they're about a hundred yards from St. Stan's Grade School. We're about six blocks south of the new South Shore Station and, and I'm just wondering if it'd be an impediment to growth. While I think we need the program like this, I just worry about the security and safety. And then that would be paramount for me as a next door neighbor to these folks. And uh, uh, I just wonder if that'd be a concern and if we could uh, be certain that would be on everyone's mind.
Thank you.
Okay, me. Good evening, Paul Chris Belinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Also a lifelong resident of the Second Ward Midtown, as they call it now. I want to really briefly give you a little bit of my experience. Thirty-three years as a member of the Swanson Center, eighteen years as a Assistant Griever and also a union counselor dealing with alcoholism and drug addiction. And I take exception to Mr., is it Gardner? Gilmore. Uh, comment about might be the soberest house in that neighborhood? I can't even remember the last time I had a drink, thank you for the comment. I want to say that I don't believe that that is in a good spot. Intention is good, but the spot is terrible. That is in the middle of the bar network in mi- in, in the city. And as Dr. Cora said, recidive, people falling off the wagon is a high rate. But I think it's detrimental. We already have um, the keys of hope in our neighborhood, which I live right down the street from. They have fights there all the time, Sunday morning, you ought to be there, okay? Constant, a constant turmoil down there. So, in saying that, I think that intention is good, but doesn't Tunnel Blank have a better spot? All right, because I lived there for years and I know what St. Anthony's done. And I know what, and you gotta remember that Tunnel Blank is a part of St. Anthony's Hospital, all right, they own it. For years, for years, they kept buying up property and doing all kinds of things over there. The last thing they did not too long ago, through the planning department, rezoned about two hundred and fifty homes there to a medical uh zoning and people didn't even know about it. People couldn't even refinance their homes. So I think that they need to find a different location where it's not in Midtown. Give us a break, okay? Really. And I'm sure by the time this is all said and done, there's going to be other residents ticked off about it. Mr. Najimek, I also have your uh, go along with your sentiment. Um, if you think about it, it's three blocks from Barker Ave where right now you got three taverns, eight blocks away, another tavern. I, I mean, I, I don't think it's a good spot for people who are recovering, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Belinski. Public comment, this will be the last public comment?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Coleman Moore, I live at two zero one Horton Street. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity on behalf of the resident speaker today. Uh, let me be clear, everyone deserves a second chance and recovery programs are essential. However, the placement of such facility must be carefully considered to balance the needs of those in recovery with well-being of the surrounding community. First and foremost, our neighborhood is a residential area chosen by families for its safety, stability, and peaceful environment. A drug recovery house by its very nature introduced a level of uncertainty and risk that can impact the security and quality of life of the residents. Now, I've been there for twenty-five years. It's also, it's going to increase foot traffic, potential relapses, and law enforcement involvement are valid concerns that cannot be annulled. Additionally, the presence of a recovery house has been shown negative negativity to impact profit values. Because you split a three, a three point one million dollar neighborhood, I mean, drug recovery house and neighborhood, it's, it's not going to bring up the value. That's, if bring up the value, that's called progression. It's going to, it's going to cause regression. It's going to draw the value down of every house in the neighborhood. I've been in real estate for the last twenty years, I know this. I do know this. Um, it's going to lower the property values and it's going to create long-term financial consequences for the homeowners that have worked hard in that neighborhood, worked very hard, I'm one of those. Um, I just think it should be somewhere else, somewhere near uh suitable locations, near a medical facility versus up in the Midtown area where there's bars down Barker Avenue, you know? I mean, who said that they're gonna leave at ten o'clock at night, go to the bar? And, and they can't get back in, so they're gonna be running around the neighborhood. You know, I hope it don't happen. It's the same thing, let's talk about Valparaiso home values and Michigan City home values. There's a big difference there. There's a big difference. So if you put this up in a two hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, so they say, this is going to draw it down. It's going, it's going to be regression. So that's all I have to say. I just hope you guys, I hope the, the Port County Drug Administration find a better location for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Um, Ms. Webb, I, I ha- I'm just sitting up here and I'm just pondering, I'm just wondering. With the developers already in place, the land is already, uh, it's in the process of being secured. Um, and for the ask from the Michigan City, devil's advocate here right now. What would happen if that amount is not obtained? Would this project still be able to move forward? Or if it's not up to that, or if it's not that full amount? Or an amount at all? Will this development still be able to move forward?
We will look at um, various strategies and we may have to pivot on the operational design or construction design. Um, but, you know, we know we are committed and to speak to the issue of, of a different location. Uh, the committee has spent two years attempting to find a suitable location for this property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, uh, all public comments and council comments are closed, we will be moving on to our agenda. Next on our agenda, are there any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees?
Madam President? Yeah, I have a report.
Chris Belinski?
Yeah, being the liaison to the uh Sanitary District, uh, like I told you before the meeting, but I'll let the rest of the council know that Mr. Al Wallace, who is a uh, one of the directors for the uh Sanitary District, is going to be on the agenda for the first meeting in May. And what he's going to be talking about, subject matter is the Lafayette Barker Sewer Project, where we stand and where the city's going uh forward with that. He'll be giving a PowerPoint presentation and he's going to have handouts for every council member to bring them up to speed on what this project is, if you're not familiar with it, and uh, what we have to do moving forward. And then along with that, he's going to be giving what's called the MS Four Report, which deals with stormwater uh sewers in the city. And that has to be given to the elected officials on an annual basis and he will be giving that report also. So as I told you, Ms. uh, President, is uh, he will be contacting you to get on the agenda for May the first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of standing committees? If there are none, we will move on to Finance Committee meeting. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not meet on today due to that there was no claims to report for April first of twenty twenty-five. I would like to go over the city of Michigan City twenty twenty-five Riverboat Rainy Day Fund Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Fund type two-two-three-five Riverboat Fund Ending Balance, one million three hundred fifty-six thousand twenty-seven dollars forty-three cents. Fund type two-two-three-six Rainy Day Fund, one million eight hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars seventy-one cents. Our grand total ending balance is three million two hundred four, two hundred four thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents. Are there any reports from boards and commissions at this time? Reports from board and commissions? Chief?
Thank you, uh, Council President, this is for a board, yes.
Oh, okay.
For board and commission, I'm, I'm doing double duty tonight.
Oh, okay.
I'm on the Human Rights Commission, so um, the president asked me to read this announcement.
Yes.
Um, if I may. Uh, Michigan City Human Rights Commission is now accepting nominations for the twenty twenty-five Humanitarian of the Year. Nomination forms are available by visiting the eMichiganCity.com website. And paper copies of the nomination form are available at City Hall. The deadline to submit nominations is Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Nomination forms must be returned to City Hall, Michigan City Human Rights Commission, one hundred East Michigan City, Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana, four six three six oh. As stated in the nomination form, the Humanitarian of the Year award will be presented to someone who has significantly impacted the Michigan City community through volunteerism, leadership, and philanth- philanthropy and is dedicated to advocating for social justice. For more than forty years, this award has recognized individuals from the Michigan City community who have gone above and beyond to selflessly serve their fellow neighbors, said Daryl Borton, Chair of the Michigan City Human Rights Commission. The past recipients of this award have set a great example for the rest of us, inspiring us to use the resources we have available to ensure that everyone has a fair chance at health, happiness, and success. I'm looking forward to celebrating another wonderful individual who is making a great impact in Michigan City this year. The Humanitarian of the Year Award will be presented during a reception held on Thursday, June twelfth, at Michigan City Senior Center, Two on the Lake. Doors will open at six P M. and the program will begin at six thirty P M. Dinner will be served. Tickets are twenty-five dollars each or a table sponsor of two hundred fifty dollars for ten tickets and a table in our available at City Hall or by contacting a member of the Human Rights uh Commission, uh, Chair Daryl Borton, Vice Chair Mary Ellen Quinn, Treasurer Bunny Demke, Secretary Jamie Lorenz, uh, Sal Dumlap, Albertine, Albertine Allen, Sajana Atwater, Marty Corley, Kamisha Williams, or Tyra Robinson Walker. During this event, the Humanitarian of the Year and the uh Unsung Hero Award and two scholarships will be given. Thank you, any questions? No, thank you.
Could you repeat that, please, chief? No. April fourth. Next on the agenda?
Um, I have.
Oh, Councilwoman Mullenhour.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have two announcements, one is from the Sustainability Commission. And um, this month is Earth Month, so um, happy Earth to everybody that's here. Um, the Fourth Annual Earth- Um, the Fourth Annual Earth Month Extravaganza will be held on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, starting at ten thirty A M. with the beach cleanup. And then we'll be moving inside from twelve to three o'clock. Um, also outside will be an electric vehicle showcase. Inside will be tree giveaways, guided hikes. That'll be outside, too. Information, games, and crafts. This is an all-age and all-family event, so we do invite everybody in Michigan City and Laporte County and surrounding areas to attend. Um, this is cosponsored with the Michigan City Parks and Recreation Department and the Michigan City Tree Board. And then I also have an announcement from the Michigan City Tree Board. And that's that this green drinks, um, this Thursday, actually, there'll be a public presentation on the Michigan City Tree Inventory. It's going to be presented by Michigan City Tree Board, um, Chair, um, Jennifer Birchfield. And, um, that's happening at six thirty P M. You can join us live on Save the Dunes, um, Facebook page. Or you can get a Zoom link from M, that's E M at savetunes.org. Um, I had a preview of what this inventory is, and it's a complete inventory of all of the trees and plantable space on public land that's available for more tree plantings. I think it's extremely interesting. I learned little tidbits of trivia that excite me, and I'm sure that you'll be excited to learn what the trees are, the percentage of each of those, how much tree canopy we have, and what space is available to fill in with more. And some of you may not know, but many years ago, Michigan City was declared Tree City, USA. So I know the Tree Board is trying to live up to that designation and do some catch-up work. So please join us Thursday evening, six thirty P M. online.
Thank you. Are there any more boards and commissions? There are none. Moving on to reports of select, special or select committees? Reports of special or select committees? Any reports of special or select committees? There are none? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Fire Chief, Bear Taylor. Uh, we give you our monthly, uh, run, uh, call data from March. Um, we had sixteen fires, three hundred and three medical calls, thirty, or twenty-one hazardous conditions that did not include fire, uh, nine service calls, thirty-three good intent, thirty-three false alarm, and two, uh, related to severe weather, along with, um, one special incident type, which, again, I can never answer those on a special incident unless I have the report, which totals four hundred and eighteen calls for the month of March. Um, out of those medical calls, we used Narcan five times. Now, I know earlier in the year, we were having problems getting our Narcan numbers, and we still were, but we were able to get them. Um, so for February, we had seven. In January, we had five uses of Nar- of Narcan. So for year-to-date, we got seventeen, uh, uses of Narcan, um, that we actually used ourselves. Um, any questions on the calls or any of the runs? I think you guys did get that email to you today, correct? Okay, so you got the breakdown? Okay. Anybody got any questions on that or any concerns?
Councilman Nelson?
How much does it cost to use Narcan per?
I don't know. I can find that out for you.
Please.
I, I will. I don't, I never really messed with it because usually what, the way it was, unless it changed up, um, our deputy chief or training officer usually handles getting, uh, the trade-outs. So when we use it, we just get resupplied by, uh, used to be by the hospital. So I'll get that information for you. I'll email it to you. I mean, email it to all of you, but I'll get that for you.
How accessible is it? Could the resident come and, you know, who's having trouble with maybe, um, I don't know, a family member that's a addict, could they?
They need to call nine one one and have us come. We've had them try that before, like, hey, we just want the Narcan. We don't need you to come. We're not going to do that. Not for us. We're not doing that. Um, it actually stays in a lockbox on our truck.
Only reason why I said that over the weekend, I seen like a vending machine in the city that had a vending machine of Narcan.
Yeah, I know you used to be able to just go to Walgreens, walk in and get it or somewhere else. Uh, but for us, the way we, the way it's given to us, the way we have to, to account for it, we keep it in a lockbox on the truck. Um, that's connected to the truck, uh, but we use it. We don't, we can't just give it out and.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions? All right, so we're starting up some CPR classes, trying to get on a routine of CPR classes. Um, and those are going to be, um, done through the Salvation Army, the YMCA, and we're going to be holding them at our Fire Administration Building. Now, what I'll have, I'll have this, uh, list posted on our Facebook page. I don't believe it's on there yet. I'm not sure. I don't mess with Facebook. Um, so I'll throw out the dates for April. So as far as the Salvation Army, we're going to do CPR. It's Salvation Army on April the fifth. Uh, the YMCA is going to be April twenty-second for CPR, and they're going to have first aid on April twenty-fourth. Uh, Fire Administration, we're going to have at the Fire Administration Building on April twenty-sixth will be CPR class as well. We got dates out for May and June. I'll just have those posted on our Facebook page so we don't get everybody confused and. Um, so if you, if somebody would like to attend a CPR class at Salvation Army, you'll want to call our, uh, PIO, our Public Information Officer, Tia Free, um, at the Administration Building, eight seven three, fourteen forty. Her extension is four thousand four, four zero zero four is her extension. You'll set up and, uh, schedule a class with her for the Salvation Army or for our Fire Administration Building. As far as the YMCA, she told me today that the YMCA is going to be handling the, all their, uh, classes as far as scheduling for classes, and I believe they're getting some flyers together. Um, so you would contact Y C, YMCA if you want to do yours through YMCA or anybody would want to do that through YMCA. Um, and for now, that's all I, I have.
Taylor, is there a fee for these classes?
As far as I know, no. At this point, no, because we had got a grant to help actually offset the cost anyway. But, um, I, I was misinformed on that earlier, and I was told that the classes are free.
Okay.
So.
And I'd just like to say, um, thank you and, um, for your assistance. Um, a year, a year and a half ago, um, the Laporte County Forty Child Support Office, we actually, I actually had arrangements and we have all became, um, certified CPR.
Very good.
Um, at the training station here in Michigan City.
Very good. Yeah, I've, I've, and I've been asked, um, at other gatherings and stuff that, uh, about having a class, and if there is a group, best bet would just be call Tia, and she could, she could work that out for you guys or whoever would like to do that. Because I've, I've been asked, like, some people in businesses, like, hey, what do, how do we get our people CPR certified and all that? Um, like, people are afraid of the AEDs. When you go through the class, you see how simple they are. They're not, they're not scared. So, yeah, like I said, um, we have dates all the way. We got dates in April, May, and June. I just gave you the April dates. I'll have the May and June dates. I have the rest of it posted on the Facebook page by tomorrow. Um, and if anybody's got any questions, please call, email me, whatever. Um.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yeah, Chief Taylor, I'm sorry. I missed the second date, um, for the Salvation Army regarding the, um, first aid training.
Okay, so Salvation Army was April fifth for CPR. The YMCA had two dates. They have CPR and they got first aid. The CPR will be on April twenty-second with the YMCA, and April twenty-fourth would be the first aid class.
Okay, so there's no first aid at the Salvation Army?
No, just the CPR. And same with the Admin Building. It's just a set up CPR class. Now, maybe we'll get into that. Maybe that we'll be able to do that or, you know, with dealing with Salvation Army or whatever, probably work into more of a first aid type class. Um, but that'll, you know, that comes about, I'll definitely let everybody know.
Okay.
So like I said, any, anybody wants to sign up Salvation Army in the Fire Administration Building will be through Tia Free, our Public Information Officer. YMCA will just be through the YMCA.
Thank you so very much.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chief Taylor.
All right, thank you. I have a good rest of your evening.
You too.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. Uh, Marty Corley, Chief of Police, Michigan City Police Department. Um, I'm here tonight to give a couple of updates. One, um, our twenty twenty-four crimes numbers. Um, also, uh, emailed you all and have ready present to the monthly, uh, March twenty twenty-five, um, Michigan City Crime Reports, and then I do have some department announcements at the end, if that's okay. I try to, uh, keep it brief and don't want us to be here till nine or ten o'clock, but, um, I did want to get you all this information, so. Um, start us off. First slide, crime statistic comparisons. As you can see, you have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four numbers up there. Uh, the areas we're going to focus in, um, on this report are the cost of service, uh, our calls report, our case reports completed, arrests made, accidents, traffic stops, shots fired, calls, firearms seized, community policing, um, cost of service, and Flock used for investigations, and also I'm getting some violent crime stats as I go further. As you can see, in the areas that, uh, concern us most, um, crime is down in those areas. And some of the areas where it shows, uh, the work, the, um, the hard work of the men and women in the Michigan City Police Department, such as cost of service and community policing, those are up drastically. Next slide, please. Uh, calls for service up about eight percent. Um, in this slide, like, sorry, I got my slides mixed up. Yeah, there we go. All right, I'll try. In this slide, you'll see, um, uh, four-year progression. Um, as you can see, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, around thirty-eight thousand, twenty twenty-two, around thirty-six, then twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Twenty twenty-four, we're up forty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-three calls for service, which is a, a big eight point eight percent increase. But also, if you break that down on a monthly basis, we're running about thirty-five hundred calls for service a month. Um, and that's also compared to our twenty, uh, twenty-three numbers, that's two hundred eight eighty-one calls more per month in twenty twenty-four. Um, so we've been, um, really busy. Case reports, uh, case reports are down a little bit, but, uh, crime is still, is still out there. Uh, we're still taking, taking reports and taking the calls. I just think, um, if you, when you look at our case reports, um, I'm sorry, I have a couple of notes here I need to get to. When you look at our arrests being down, it's just that we're filing, finding other ways to deal with some of those case reports. Doesn't always, uh, or those crimes doesn't always result in an arrest. Um, I think we've, you know, figured out there's some other issues in our community that we have to deal with on the policing end, even though I don't think it's primarily our, our, uh, just our, um, concern or something that we have to deal with alone, but I think we're the first responders when the first ones get caught. And so we deal with some of those calls and it doesn't always result in an arrest. So even though our case, our, uh, our calls for service are up and some other things, you'll see that case reports taking are down. That's because a lot, some of those calls aren't always effective on arrest. All those case reports. And then arrests also are down four percent. That was for that, that analogy was actually for the total arrest down that, uh, we're getting called these calls. We're not always making arrests as like we used to because, uh, there's other ways to dilute some of the issues. So, next slide. Accidents. Accidents are down by twenty-six percent. Um, I think that has to do a lot with, uh, um, we're affecting, and you see in the next slide, we're affecting more traffic stops. Officers are out doing more, um, traffic, uh, whether it's giving citations or verbal warnings. We're stopping more cars. Actually, in the next slide, you'll see that, um, traffic stops are up twenty percent um, from twenty twenty-three. So we went from, you know, a little bit over six thousand traffic stops to, um, approximately seven, seven-nine hundred, um, traffic stops in a year. Next slide. Shots fired calls. Those are down sixteen point nine percent. Um, and again, I think that has to do a lot with, uh, just the way we're kind of patrolling, but also our ability to react a little bit faster to those calls with some of our technology. Um, and then also putting into some effect are some of our specialty units, which I'll talk about here in the, um, further into the presentation about some of the things that they do, um, hitting the streets also. And then also the way that trickles down onto our patrol and, um, allows us to be a little bit more aggressive when it comes to those type of, uh, calls for service. Firearms seized, firearms seized are up by six point three percent. Um, one hundred fifty-eight in twenty twenty-three and one hundred sixty-eight in twenty twenty-four. Again, just some aggressive work by our officers on the street, uh, going a little bit further on the traffic stop and looking for those firearms. As you can see, uh, looks like firearms seized went down in twenty twenty-two. Well, if you all remember, that's kind of right, right at the time, about the time when the state even the end decided to legalize, uh, make it a constitutional carry state. So as you can see, that still hasn't stopped us from, uh, seizing illegal firearms here in Michigan City. Next slide. And I think one of the, uh, things that we really like to highlight is our community policing efforts. Those are efforts where our officers are making those, uh, extra stops, those, they're walking through businesses, um, taking time to do a little extra and just be seen and be more vigilant in, um, the way we do business. So, um, those are up by almost twenty-six percent. Um, from, uh, forty-eight hundred twenty-five to six thousand fifty-one. Um, and we'll continue to work on that. Um, we actually had some shifts, um, going at a, I don't want to say a competition, but they want to see who can, you know, saying their, their costs of service are going up. Um, and you'll see that with the weather also. Our cost of service will go up, and a lot of cost of service are not just people calling the police, but again, um, these calls are us getting out and doing that extra without being called. Next, uh, violent crime statistics, uh, there we go. If you can look, and you can see in the blue and the gray and the orange, you have your non-fatal shootings, your murder and attempted murders. You can see they're all down. Um, and with the shot fires called going down, you see the non-fatal shootings numbers are down drastically from twenty-two to nine. Um, and then the other two categories, which for, gives you a total of a thirty-six point eight percent, um, decrease in violent crimes when it comes to those three areas. Next crime, next, uh, then we talk about criminal recklessness and domestic battery. Criminal recklessness is a, a direct effect of shots fired. A lot of times criminal recklessness involves somebody shooting and damaging property. Um, as you can see, those are drastically down. Again, reflects our shots fired numbers, uh, incidents going down, and you can see that in our criminal recklessness, and then also in domestic battery is another, uh, violent crime that is down by double digits also. Um, Flock and raping usage, uh, you know, twenty twenty-two, we started doing business with Flock, um, more on the LPR, um, arena, and then we moved into the shot detection arena. Um, twenty twenty-three is when we kind of was getting into it, but we've had a whole full year of the whole system in twenty twenty-four. And you can see that the output and the usage has, uh, tripled, you know, within that year. So, um, Flock is doing, uh, good things for us, allowing us to clear up some more cases. Next slide. If you can see in some of these other slides, especially when it comes to theft, uh, Flock is used, uh, a lot due to, to try to, to find out, uh, who the suspects are, and you can see that even though the death numbers are going up, but the, uh, amount of arrests that's being affected um, are up also, and that's a lot to do with, uh, us being able to identify suspects on Flock through, you know, some type of vehicle footprint. Next slide. Motor vehicle theft cases, um, those are down. And again, Flock is another reason for that. Um, we're, we have a lot more motor vehicle, uh, theft, uh, recoveries when it comes to these cases. Uh, you know, our, our officers are instantly, um, going to Flock for a lot of things when it comes to identifying folks. As we know, uh, criminals either walk or drive places, so, um, and nine times out of ten, it's, uh, a vehicle of some sort. So, um, we've used our Flock a, a lot for those things, and it's allowed us to go. You see the decrease in the numbers in the different areas. Next, uh, slide. As we continue to talk about technology, uh, and this is a trend, again, a lot of trends are all over, but countywide, we talk about it, um, on the regular. As you can see burglaries, um, the, that lighter gray is the total between the level five and level four burglaries. Um, as you can see, it's down drastically also, but I think a lot of that has to do nowadays with, uh, the technology. Um, if, if anybody doesn't, a lot of people do have, um, ring doorbell cameras or type, some type of surveillance, whether they're in their house or somebody on a block. I think those are the type of things that detour, uh, those people or, uh, those actors, bad actors from, um, committing those type of crimes when it comes to burglary. Um, next slide. And as you see on this next slide, I wanted to promote our online camera registry, which again allows you to register your, um, surveillance cameras with the Michigan City Police Department. I want to continue to say that it does not give us access to your cameras. It only allows us to know that you have them and then, and allows us to know that we can ask you for footage if there's, uh, an instance of a crime or something participating that happened in your area. So again, no, we don't have access to it. Only access we have is what you give us, and that's when you give us footage. Um, this, uh, the camera registry, um, you'll hear me harping on it more and more, um, because it, it saves not only time for us, but it also saves time when it comes to, um, further investigations. No longer, if I have camera registry, do I have to go do what we used to call, uh, neighborhood canvas? Uh, when I was a detective, that'd be one of the things I really did not like because it took a lot of time off, away from me actually interviewing and doing some other things. Um, and so now with this, uh, camera registry, if we know people have cameras, um, just by looking at our platform, um, on our, uh, database, then we can just contact those folks, you know, without having to go knocking on the door. And, you know, a lot of people don't like the police coming to their house. They don't want to be considered a, a snitch or somebody telling or something like that. Um, this alleviates that also because all we got to do is send you the email or the text message. Next slide, next slide. Laporte County Drug Task Force, um, next slide for me, please. Here's the numbers for our Laporte County Drug Task Force. Um, as we, uh, talked about, um, you have heard some information from, uh, the recovery house people, and the word Hyda came up, um, and we are a Hyda-designated area, um, which funnels a lot of federal funds into our, uh, task force, allows them to not only um which fu- funnels a lot of federal funds into our uh task force, allows them to not only reach um what's in our area, but to go further and out outside of our areas. So as you can see, here's some numbers from them. Um total cases made that that uh includes drug buys or self initiated type cases, uh they're up by ten. Um guns purch- uh purchase receipts are down by two. Um arrests made are down by twenty five. Pending charges are up by fifty seven and overdose death investigations. And those are just the ones that they um investigate exclusively are are uh down by six. Um I will say this, as you see the ones that are down specifically, those arrests made, um yeah, ninety six they made ninety, uh I mean, sorry, twenty twenty three, they made ninety six arrests, twenty twenty four is seventy one. But if you go down to that pending charge area, there's still charges out there, and that's not that people are not being charged, it's that those cases are continued. Um one of the recent cases, our drug task force had to uh participate in is called Motown Blues. Um and then reached all, it started here in Michigan City, but reached to supply all the way in Detroit, Michigan, that was bringing stuff into our community. Well, our our task force guys just didn't work the local plug. They worked the plug all the way back. Um it's a investigation that uh lo- lured in, I would say, anywhere from twenty twenty five uh indictments. Um it was four states, Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Arizona, um multi-state, again, different federal agencies and just kind of shows you that uh, yeah, we do, we deal with a lot of stuff here, but our people have started doing um those cases that work up the chain, those things where you talk about cutting off the head and all those type of things, drug trafficking organizations, you don't just look at the local dealer, but you look and see where it's come, the supply is coming in. And basically, when we're us being a designated HIDA area allows us to have the funding and the um and also the additional resources to continue those investigations. So you'll see these numbers are are crucial to our our community to continue to thrive in a in an era, in an era when, you know, drugs are here and there and everywhere nowadays. Next slide. Another part of our drug task force is our crime suppression unit, uh more of a street level unit, um does a lot of uh good work in the streets. Um they are another, when you talk about uh shots fired going down and um some of those violent crimes going down, they are a big factor of that. Um they work uh well with, you know, going after those bad actors that participate in those um violent uh crimes, but not just going after them, but making sure that solid cases are built. Um it's one thing to arrest folks, but then it's also another thing to build a case that makes sure prosecution has what they need uh to affect a good conviction. Um and they do that. As you can see, their numbers are are great. I mean, these are are added to what the drug task force is also doing um also. Um not, so our two full time officers, Corporal Matt Babcock and um Detective Patrick Lewis. But then we also have a a group of part time officers, but what happens, you know, the effect that they have is not just what they're doing also. It kind of, it trickles down into our our ranks when they're out working. Then you see other officers kind of backing up, working with them and some of the things and tactics that they're using is then exposing them and then they're out doing it also. Uh the fugitive apprehension streets team, um we renamed that to the future warrant unit. Um many of you don't know, uh but before the county sheriff's department used to uh maintain all of the warrants. Um so at one point, we just had a future apprehension street team, which went after higher level, higher level uh warrants. Um they're a a a subsidiary of the, or they are tied to U S Marshals Task Force. Um about two years ago, we had to take our warrants back here in Michigan City, so we created our warrant division again. Um but as time has come on, we've been able to encompass the warrant and future apprehension team together. So they're doing the paperwork and they're out going out and getting the the bad guys um also. So uh we named it to the fugitive warrant unit. As you can see, their numbers, next slide please. Are consistently um about the same. Um some arrests are are down in um in certain areas, but uh these are, these are just warrants that they're going out serving, um whether it's um a federal warrant on a local person, a state warrant, or some type of local type of uh possible warrant that um gets a issue through the courts. They're going out, making sure those people are um brought to justice or brought to the courts to um adhere to their charges. And next, um as over the months, uh when I've given my monthly reports, I've included the um statistics and numbers from our social worker, uh Johnson Coburn. I think it's important that uh we identify and that the public recognizes that um Johnson is is not a police officer, but she's a big part of our operations. Um I think when it comes to mental health and trauma, um like many communities, uh we we are a community that suffer from that, from suffering from those um type of effects. And so I think it's important that we don't just think of Johnson as a social worker, but Johnson as a part of Michigan City Police Department operations. So I think it's important that I give you those numbers. Uh the first slide there uh basically showed that from January and March and and um I had to ask Johnson because when she gave me her numbers, she gave me January to March of twenty twenty four and then from April to uh um December of twenty twenty four. Well, she had already done the January, March for me like last year, so she was like, I'm not gonna redo them. I'm just gonna give you. So from January to March, uh she had eighty nine referrals. Um eighty uh three of those were uh contacts that she made for those referrals. Um that next slide, if you look at the referral sources, um as I, when I say she's a big part of our operations is because um as you can see, a big part of her referral sources come from our patrol officers. Um the the men and women out there having the first contact with folks um that sometimes um their help may be um at the moment, but they need need more long term help. Um we do have half our uh police force trained in crisis intervention, which helps out a lot. Um helps out Johnson, KSL, but they're able to identify some things, get people to where they need to go at the moment, but then there's also some long term effects um of of services that Johnson's able to supply and um lead folks to. So as you can see, patrol is a big part of her referral services. Um and in that timeframe of that January to March timeframe, uh mental health is the biggest thing she deals with um when it comes down to her referrals. Um next slide is yeah, there we go. Basically, from April to December twenty twenty four. Uh as you can see, uh the drastic jump in the numbers throughout the year, um three hundred eighty six referrals and out of that, three hundred eighty sixty eight, she made some type of contact with those referrals. Um again, if you go to referral sources, uh again, it's uh over sixty percent is from our patrol division. And then the referral types um are biggest percentages, mental health. Next slide. Next slide. Um as we talk about crime and we talk about uh stacks and um increase and decrease, I think it's important that we recognize uh the work of the men and women in the Michigan City Police Department, because without their hard work, um these numbers would not be possible. Um I know sometimes that um and I probably, I did say this here before, but I'm gonna say it again. Sometimes as the chief police in uh my administration, we get a ta- a big pat on the back for these numbers, but it's really those the men and women out there every day um responding to those calls, doing the work, um being involved in the trenches on a day to day basis are the reason for uh the results that we have. So in twenty twenty four, we gave out eighty two letters of accommodation, um four life saving awards, um and nineteen exceptional stars, uh exceptional service stars. Also, our officer of the year for twenty twenty four, when it came to the exchange club was Detective Corporal Matt Babcock and the uh Detective Patrick Lewis, which you saw that was the crime suppression unit. Um due to their their work, they were uh nominated and won that award. And then our Rotary Service Bus Off Self Officer of the Year is Detective Corporal Mark Golevy um due to some of his work. Um so we make sure that our officers uh are not only they're out there um doing the work, but they're also um understood that their their services are appreciated. And when they're going above and beyond, we make sure that it, or we think it's important, or we know it's important, that they're recognized for their service. Um then also, if you look at the bottom line, Chili Cook Off winner was uh Officer Mans, um and with the help of our secretary, Ms Connie, she had a special ingredient that we finally able to beat the fire department, the chili cook off. So no Chief Barrett might be gone. Um then also our Officer uh Chris Smith Award winner, um if you all are not familiar with Chris Smith, Chris Smith was an officer that uh he got on and he had cancer. Um Chris Smith, if you didn't ever get a chance to meet him, um maybe being a police life, bigger than life. Um he even made me feel good about coming to work at times when I didn't want to. Um um his passion was to be a police officer and to do it to the best of his ability, no matter what he was going through. Um he battled cancer as he was going through his training and everything. And um I think he uh was with us for about a year before uh he finally uh succumbed to uh his effects of cancer. Um but there's an annual award named after him. Um this year, our recipient was Corporal Aaron Bass. Corporal Aaron Bass uh is really important to our uh operations and has been here really in the last couple of years because he's our F T O coordinator, which is our field training officer program, which any new hire goes through that. He coordinates that with our other field training officers. So that's been an important part of our operation the last couple of years, because in the last two years, we've basically hired twenty nine officers and then last year, we had about fifteen of those officers uh graduate the police academy. Um some uh grants that we received uh last year, uh Unity Foundation, again, as we talk about Johnson being a part of our operations, um she brings uh an just another level of of what we can do um when we don't know what we need to do. Um and so Jocelyn actually uh got a Unity Foundation grant for Ben's Blue Bags, which basically gives our officers the resources and the skills to uh deal with folks that are dealing, that uh have autism. So when we come across them, we know how to um better identify and deal with them when on a call for service. Um if you all are familiar with uh autism to certain levels, it could almost seem like somebody's being combative when they're really not. So it's important that uh as we talk about mental health and and trauma, that we continue to train our people, identify um uh a plethora of different uh a- a- effects that it could have on the way we look at things in the police department. Uh we did get a federal community uh proj- uh project grant, um Frank Murvan uh gave us a grant or allowed us to get a grant for a hundred eighty thousand dollars, which will, which you will see uh thirty new flock cameras coming up here in the city um in the next about month and a half. Also, uh Canine Freya, uh our our comfort dog and also slash search rescue dog. Um if you have not been or been around Clean Out Freya, I I I I tell you, you have to come around Freya. She will, Freya will make you feel like a different person. You cannot give her chocolate, though. I tried to, her handler doesn't let me give her chocolate. But Freya uh uh is a comfort dog. Uh we've had, we've had the ability to use her in different instances with people. Again, you know, just was a little bit dealing with anxiety, some things, Freya allowed them to be more calm where we could, you know, then get down to business and help that person. Um if you did not seen the news, probably about a week and a half ago, Freya uh was, she used her search and rescue abilities. Um there's an older lady that uh got uh confused and kind of was lost. Um Freya was able to track her down. She had been out and about in the cold for about three hours. Um probably another hour or so, and she probably would have succumbed to her uh to death due to being out in the cold um for that long. Freya was able to uh find her um and then also comfort her until uh we could get EMS there and route to take care of. So um it was a big uh big find by Freya. And then uh our in uh decompression room, um again, as we talk about the mental health um and the trauma that our community deals with, we also have to step back and think about the men and women at the police department that also have incidents where we see things and go through things due to the nature of of doing this job. Um we all have stories of how it was in the old days. Well, the old days are over. And I think as we go to the new days, we we have to explore those avenues to make sure that we're not just physically taking care of our people, but mentally, our people are prepared to go out because when we take, when we do the whole holistic wellness approach when it comes to um our officers and our staff, I think it it's just a better uh piece for the the city and the community that we serve. So we have a decompression room that um officers can go to uh thank you to, based on a grant from Unity Foundation and some donations from Naturally Wood and and Sacred Dooms, um are also able to go somewhere if they need to before shift, after shift, or during the shift, if they uh talk to their supervisor and need that that moment to kind of decompress this, somewhere they can go and get that um get their thoughts together. Um as you could, as I talked about, community policing numbers, um community outreach has been another big thing was at the police department. As you know, yearly, we do the Youth Leadership Academy and the Citizens Police Academy. Um Youth Leadership Academy applications are coming out here soon. Um actually, this week they'll be out. Um Citizen Police Academy, those be out a little bit earlier too, but I I just en- encourage you know, citizens to, for their children to take part in both uh the Youth Leadership Academy and then also the Citizens Police Academy. Um other community outreach uh things that we do, you know, Easter egg hunt, which is coming up here soon. Um Rescue Reelers, uh which is a good time, um where first responders get together and do, go fishing, have a fishing tournament with uh local kids, and we compete against each other. Um National Night Out, um the Doom Book uh Dragon Boat Race, uh Halle Mills, and Shop With Our Cops. Last slide. Um and in twenty twenty four, uh we were able to partner and work with over fifty two different organizations within um organizational business within the Michigan City area. We're hoping to double that here in twenty twenty five. I think uh not only um is it uh one of our successes or our successes are due to the men and women going out there and doing the job, but I think it's also our partnerships and the work we do with the community allows um not for more trust and transparency with the police, but also for us to be more in tune with our community also when it comes to um during the the day to day uh operations. Any questions on the the report? Um this is, like I said, this is a, this presentation is based off of the the full report that you all gave too, but if there's any questions off of that report or anything that they report.
Chief Corley, I just have one question. I've noticed that there's been a lot of Indiana State Troopers within the city. So when they do their traffic stops, do tho- are those included for city or for state?
No, that's they're separate from us. I will say uh the Indiana State Police have been a great partner of us for several years. Um back when we were, our numbers were, you know, down real low, they would come in and uh patrol side by side with us. Um the last several years, we have uh maintained a, not just a uh, I guess, a partnership or better uh working relationship with other ag- agencies within uh La Porte County, but uh State Police have been one of those. Um the uh chiefs from every department, the marshals, sheriff department, La Porte City, Michigan City. Um and the State Police, we uh all meet uh every other month um and kind of talk about things, build a- again, better rapport, better relationship. If they need something, we help them out. If we need something, they help them out. So you will see State Police coming in um our area. Right about now, I think also is a a traffic blitz time also. So that's where it comes kinds of, kind of increases. Um we will see them there, but especially for bigger holidays and festival times, they will come in and help us out. Um Lieutenant Terrence Rings Weems, who is the new um commander of the low post, again, works with us very well and has always uh expressed his people to come into our community to help out.
Thank you. Councilman Dabney?
Yes, uh I know that a lot of the things that you've been able to do was, you know, at one point, we just weren't there in terms of staffing. Uh but now we've hit up those numbers and where are we right now regarding uh street ready officers?
Uh we are, so well, we're at, we were at eighty three, um which that included one, we have one in academy. Um Michelle, uh Sergeant Wodelski just retired. Um so that brings us down to really eighty two with the one in academy. Um we do have, again, um we've been up and down with some, with some hiring folks, but we do have another lateral transfer in the pipeline. Um I don't want to talk too much on it because it seems like every time I do it, I jinx us and it doesn't come through. But uh if this one, when this one comes through, it's gonna be um very uh, I mean, they're all big for us, but I mean, there's some significant um um milestones that go along with uh if this officer comes back to us. Um also, when it comes to just not what we do at the police department, I think some of the community things also. Um so we are, I would say, I would just be safe to say eighty two. Um Sergeant Wodelski did retire, but she's vacationing out, so I told her if I need her, I might have to call her off vacation. So.
Councilwoman Mauden Howard?
Thank you, Madam President. Um Chief Corley, um heartfelt thanks to you, to all of your staff and to also your police officers for your decrease in crime, especially on violent crimes and also burglaries. And I also want to mention something that you not only have a social worker on staff, but you yourself have a degree in social work. And I didn't realize that until I was just, you know, looking around the Michigan City um webs, government website. And I think that your dedication to what many would call the softer side is really making a big difference in the hard crime numbers that we have. So um thank you much and, you know, just really continue doing what you're doing because um we're seeing the results of that. Thank you.
Th- thank you. We were just uh kind of talking about just the law enforcement in general, um and I had the opportunity to talk to uh a couple of other chiefs from other places and talk about uh the social aspect of how policing has evolved. Um there's a lot of times our calls for service deal with, you know, we have to deal with that, as you say, softer side and kind of look for other resources. I mean, uh because again, I think, you know, we have a lot of problems, but always arrest is not, you know, the prob- the solve so- solution to. but always arrest is not, you know, the prob- the solve so- solution to that problem. Um, so um, I think, you know, the balance that we have started with, you know, having Jocelyn on staff, getting that training and having that ability to um, give people different resources and tools to kind of deal with what they're dealing with, um, to go with what they're dealing with at the moment, has allowed us again to, you know, take our resources and do something, you know, a little bit different here and a little bit different there and um, is resulting in. Um, overall, I didn't say overall, but and I think we've kind of talked about, and the mayor has, um, even the prosecutor has. But um, the overall decrease in crime is seventeen percent, which um, and then if you go even further into um, the last couple of years since myself, Chief Forker and Chief Cooney have been together in administration and even involves up to about twenty five percent. So um, and as you gave us kudos, we have to, uh, majority of this council was here at the time when um, we needed some extra funds for recruitment and retention. And so it is also uh, we thank you all for uh, your pushing, your help with getting us the the pay up to where it is now and um, has allowed us also to attract new people and some people that left at the time too. So I think uh, I always tell people what's great about Michigan City is that uh, at the end of the day, I think no matter what um, indifference we have or um, things that go on, I think when it's for the benefit of the community, we find a way to make sure that we work together and get it done. And um, these numbers are, again, the men and women did a lot of work, but they're also um, an example or they're a direct effect of us just working together as a community.
Dr. Cora?
No, uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I I, it's a great report, Chief. I uh, congratulate you and your team. You know, I've always felt that this community policing is very useful and your numbers uh, showed it. Um, it builds relationships and also like in healthcare, we talk about prevention all the time, you know? And community policing, I feel, is like preventing crime and by building those relationships. So thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Uh, Captain Gillian Ashley, uh, we've actually did a little restructuring and she is now the captain of over uh, the SROs, but also community involvement. And so again, like I told you, our partnership numbers and some stuff we're doing, we're looking to double. And we made a commitment by putting her in a position full time to go out and invest in other areas of community involvement engagement that the department can get into. Uh, because before that, it was me, I was the community involvement engagement person. So I think she'll have a a a more success in doing that on a full time basis for us due to not just, you know, her connections in the community, but also her her leadership and guidance too. So uh, we're looking forward to, you know, tripling and doubling, tripling those numbers uh, as the years come.
If there are no other questions, thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. I can see your like, uh, Councilwoman Daisy.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Chief, um, for your report and thank you all for everything you do. Um, you mentioned uh, the old times and it's not the old times anymore. And it's very evident that you all are very aware of what's happening um, in our society and how people are changing and how we need to change with them. Um, and you as a department are growing and that is greatly appreciated by the whole community. Um, and you've mentioned this a bit, but do you think, um, would you say there's a direct correlation between the uh, reduction of arrests and the social worker Jocelyn and her connections with the community?
Um, you know what, when I, when I was looking at the numbers, uh, I I wasn't able to dive in to give you uh, I guess uh, for sure numbers, but from just my experience and kind of looking at some of the areas where those were down, I would say that Jocelyn has played a a great role. Um, I have often talked to the mayor about having another social worker. Um, again, I know that becomes a budgeting and so much more and some other avenues, but I think she's played a great role. But, you know, the biggest part of her role has played is not only is she's doing what she's doing, but she's able to help our people. Um, I always say, I don't think, you know, some of these instances when, where officers are involved in these uh, brutality cases, I don't think they woke up one morning and say, you know what, I'm gonna go out there and hurt somebody. I think because of the situation they were put in and and some of the things that they were dealing with, it evolved to that. And again, I think Jocelyn is that resource that sometimes officers get to a place because without the CIT training or some of these other things, you know, it used to be, you either did as I say, or you went to jail. Um, and I think we've, we got the understanding that we can't arrest our way out of problems. Um, and so we have to be able to um, lead people to those resources. And, you know, yeah, we can have a a million people who do this and do that, but at the end of the day, the men and women in uniform are the first ones there. We're, we're called for everything, like, I mean, everything is just amazing of what we're not called for, but we're called for everything. So I think it's, you know, we have to be prepared. And I think Jocelyn allows us to not only be prepared, but us also feeling uh, more secure in our job when sometimes we feel like we don't have the answer. And she now steps in and deals with those um, calls or those uh, I guess uh, issues that are brought to our attention. And she can be a better um, tool and resource for the, for those people who need help that doesn't include any type of enforcement. So I guess my long answer is yes.
Councilman Chris Belinski?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Chief, fantastic presentation. The numbers are great and I want to thank you for it. I also want to thank Assistant Chief Cooney, who's here tonight, and Assistant Chief Forker, who's not here tonight, and this young police officer that's sitting there, come here, what's your name, sir? Okay, I want to thank you because I know you're out there, you're out there in the streets doing uh, doing the work. But tonight, you got an easy uh, you're sitting here watching a council meeting and that's okay. You get, you deserve a little free time every once in a while. Uh, but anyway, uh, I just want to thank you for doing the fantastic work, the outreach work to the community. Uh, policing is different, just like you've said, Chief, than it was even five years ago. And I think the Michigan City Police Department is evolving to that and the results are there. Uh, and the one thing I want to say is that when it comes to economic development, we're always worried about having the right economic development team in place to go out and get the developers. Well, people wouldn't come to the city to begin with if you didn't have a safe city, correct? Usually you look at schools, you know, the safety of the community and things like that. And with the record that we have, I believe you're the first team that we have for economic development. And then the other guys come behind. So with that being said, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work and effort and ladies and, you know, all that. And yeah, and you also alluded to the uh, contract a couple of years ago that the city council uh, provided to increase the pay, make it competitive with other police departments around and get the uh, uh, the lateral transfer uh, uh, program put into place. Yeah, we saw the need and and I know that the police department had asked for it for a couple of contracts and we were able to uh, oblige. And I think it made a lasting result on making an improvement in the police department. So I want to thank you for that comment also, or compliment, yeah. Thank you. So keep up the great work.
Councilman Beatri?
Nobody likes bad news, everybody likes good news. And the news you brought us tonight is good news. Uh, anytime the crime drops by seventy to twenty five percent, that's good news. Not only for us who live here, but for, as Councilman Chris Belinski said, people who are maybe considering moving here. So kudos to you and the eighty two people that you work with. Uh, and I just want to say one other thing. I don't think anybody in the, in the departments that work for the city does a more thorough job than you do on a monthly basis or a yearly basis of bringing the information to us. So appreciate that and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments from the council?
I, I do have a couple of announcements. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Oh, the Jetson? Oh, okay.
Lord's yours.
Okay, um, so, um, I gave you all the monthly report, I I'll bypass that. Um, again, I don't want to be up here all night talking, plus I'm starting to sweat a little bit too, so. Um, but uh, I do want to make some announcements. We are having a Business After Hours event with the Chamber of Commerce at the police department, open to the public. It's April seventeenth, four thirty to six thirty. We'll be giving some tours, uh, we'll be giving some demos for our canines. You will see our canines, get to talk to people from every division within our department, um, see some of our uh, um, re- tools that we do have. Um, and just, you know, just wanted to make it, make it like an open house, open to the public to kind of, you know, come by and um, and see your beautiful facility that's there on Michigan Boulevard. Um, so please come out to that. Um, on the sixteenth of April, we will be uh, stuffing eggs again for the Easter egg hunt. That's nine AM to twelve PM um, at Senior Center. Uh, we will have uh, some light refreshments at the beginning and we will be serving lunch also. Um, this is something that we do every year at the fire department and special events. Shout out to special events who has come in the last couple of years and kind of just took it over and just kind of told us where we need to be, a lot less planning for us, which I like it like that because I have eighty four people that can help me out. So um, that helps me out a lot. Um, and then, oh, the Easter egg hunt is on the nineteenth uh, at Federer's Alley and the gates will open at eleven thirty. Um, and the hunt will start at noon. Also, uh, this week, we have rolled out our new website. I know the city is uh, also have a new website, but I think we were the guinea pigs to go first. Um, there's some things need to tweak, but we do have a uh, a new website for the police department. Um, that U L R is uh, police dot Michigan City I N dot gov. Um, a lot more informative than the old uh, website um, that we had here at the city that showed the policing, shows a little bit of our structure, our programs. Um, and we're able to also put in some special event stuff on that also. So um, go check it out. Again, we are still kind of, we rolled it out, but there's still some things we're doing. We're actually taking department photos here in the next two weeks. So the photos will change a little bit. And um, just a part of that, something new with us, uh, today, uh, we've rolled out our new Class A uniforms. As you can see, um, I'm no longer wearing the traditional French blue pants. Um, we are now in what we like to call the LAPD blue, all blue, everything is blue. Um, so uh, this is what we'll be wearing for now for Class A uniforms. Uh, unfortunately, the the French blue pants were discontinued and the only way that we could continue to uh, wear them or use them or buy them is we had to buy three to four hundred pair a year. And uh, where unless you all have that money, we can, you know, gift. But no, we're not, you know, prepared to that. So we went to this uh, new look. Um, so uh, these are what our Class A uniforms will look like for now, so. Any other questions? Uh, also, the um, the, the crime report is available if anybody wants and the public would like to have the full crime report, feel free to come to the police station. Um, I will have copies there. I do have a couple of copies here with me in the back. Um, I suppose I could kind of leave those even in the back or up here for anybody that wants them. And I did want to point out one thing, as you were talking about um, Jocelyn and some of the numbers. Um, one in my notes I kind of skipped over was when we looked at uh, arrests being down. Um, again, while I talked about, you know, us doing different things, different ways. Um, if you look in your reports, you'll see criminal trespass, which is the area where arrests are down. And that used to be, those are the arrests that sometimes those folks that deal with mental health issues or trauma are dealing with because they're going to the gas stations or to the stores and they don't want to be in there. So it's not that we're not arresting them, I just think that we're, I think the way that we are are dealing with um, their presence there now is a little bit different opposed to just automatically arresting them. Now it's, you know, saying, we know Joe Smith and can we get him here and there? Or, you know, can we call this person or does Jocelyn have a rapport with him? So that contributes to our arrest numbers being down also, those type of uh, crimes, so.
There are no other questions? Thank you so much, Chief Corley.
Thank you for your time. I've been with.
On to our next agenda on the is, are there any petitions, Madam Clerk?
There are no petitions received.
Madam Clerk on communications?
A notice was received in the clerk's office on March eighteenth from Idam regarding an air permit approval. Also, correspondence was received in the clerk's office on March twenty sixth from Roddy McCormick regarding overflow parking at Burnham Brewery.
Madam Clerk on the first resolution?
A resolution by title only, waiving the building permit fee and inspection fees for Homeward Bound Village, Villages, Carwick Village Project. And that's introduced by Ms. Maldonour.
Do this, um, sponsor has any comments?
Madam President, the comment I have to make is that um, Gray Colter, who wasn't able to be with us tonight, has asked to be added as a sponsor um, per his request. And um, I received that in an email and the clerk's office received that also. So um, if we may, please add him as a sponsor. And um, his reasoning for that is that he really wanted the um, Michigan City council persons to know he was in support of this, um, regardless of him being able to be here or not. Um, the other comment I would like to make is that the Homeward Bound Villages, Carwick Village Project was made possible by a fifty thousand dollar um, grant donation from our city. And with this um, sixteen thousand thirty dollar addition by waiving the permit fee and inspection fee, that this comes to a total of sixty six thousand thirty dollars that we've contributed to this project. And this brings us much closer to the hundred thousand dollars that was originally asked of our city um, by the Homeward Bound Villages, Carwick Village Project. And um, I also wanted to note that La Porte County um, also donated one hundred thousand dollars to this project. So very much, um, this is a locally um, sponsored um, transition house um, for affordable housing. And I shouldn't have said transition, I should have said affordable housing um, for individuals that um, are stabilizing their lives after being homeless and getting jobs and becoming contributing members of our community.
I would like to open this up for public comment on this resolution. There's.
Hi, um, this, um, my name is Mary Lynn Wall and I am the city controller for the city of Michigan City. All I want to do is I, and I, and I acknowledge that we have waived permit fees before. I just want to make sure that all the city council is aware that permit fees make up a large portion of our, of our revenues that we, that we anticipate for our general fund. Um, this year for twenty twenty five, we estimated twenty nine million dollars of revenues for the general fund. Um, about twenty two million of that, our property taxes and other um, um, state shared revenues. Our next largest revenue source would be federal grants. Our transit department um, is fifty percent funded by federal grants. Then building permits comes, comes in next. So that's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what we estimated for building permit revenues. Um, and the building permit revenues help support, along with all the other general fund revenues, help support all the departments in the general fund, which include police, fire, the controller's office, the clerk's office, mayor's office, planning inspection, central maintenance, city hall maintenance, attorney's office, transit engineer, human rights, the forester, um, and um, the public arts. So although this isn't a large amount, just want to make sure that this is aware that with the city is always looking for additional revenue sources to help our general fund. And like I said, we, uh, the inspection fees are, the plant, the building permit fees are an integral part of of our revenue sources for the general fund. Just want to make you aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Uh, my name is Junior Pressle, so I'm here on behalf of Homeward Bound. Uh, I was just going to go up and field any questions if you had, uh, or thank you for your time tonight. I can tell you a little bit about the building side of things, so I'm the construction management part of it. Uh, Mr. Grantquist here is more for the Homeward Bound in case you have questions on the actual program itself. Um, happy to answer anything, wanted to thank you guys for possibly helping us out. Uh, so right now, we're, we're working to to bring some housing into the area. I know it's much needed, um, the money would go a long way towards making that, that really possible.
Councilman Chris Belinski?
Uh, I do have a, a question. And uh, so the residents that are going to live in these units, are they going to be Michigan City residents? Or can these people come from La Porte, Valpo, West Lafayette?
I believe it's Michigan City residents, but I'm not on the board directors for the actual, or the organization.
Uh, good evening, Council. Thank you so much. I'm Dan Grantquist, one of the board members of Homeward Bound. reported, yes, the focus is certainly on the local community. Some of our board members are involved with other shelters and other uh, operations and organizations in the community. So that's our focus. We're not looking to broadcast across the state and around the, the country here for it. So we're focused on Michigan City residents. It's for Michigan City and it's for the needy people that we have here, just like so many of the shelters that we have.
Okay, is it in your bylaws that Michigan City? Okay, is it in your bylaws that Michigan City folks are going to be in those units?
Well, it's not a function of the bylaws because this is a separate, separate, it's a cooperative type of a development. So the bylaws will be written by that. We've gotten, getting some assistance, we anticipate from Notre Dame, some of the council there to help structure that. But it's going to be a cooperative community, so it's the people in the community that'll be working together. They're going to be managing their own communities. So they're going to, eventually they'll be on the board of directors for that community, that local community. They're part of Michigan City community, working here in town and helping them that way.
So there's no guarantee that it's going to be Michigan City people?
Well, the guarantee is those that apply and those that get approved for it. But who are the homeless people there? Who are the people that have the needs in the community? So if they apply and that's what we plan to present and work with. So the guarantee is the focus, just like any other project that we have. There's no effort or no expectation that's going to be around the country. We're not looking for people to come from Lafayette or Tippecanoe or Evansville to come up here to a little little affordable housing unit here. It's for people in our community, a lot of the referrals will be made from Salvation Army, from the other kinds of shelters that we have here. They'll be working with us that way and people in our community. And we appreciate some of you attended the Michigan City Community enrichment banquet. That were, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations in our community. They're doing a lot of good, a lot of help for people, needy people, whether it's food, whether it's shelter, whether it's housing, whether it's medical needs. And Homeward Bound is one of those organizations in our community that's helping the local residents and the local people here that have needs, trying to provide some affordable housing. And it's not just housing, but it's building a whole cooperative type of a community where they will eventually, once they get some training and guidance, they'll be on the board of directors for the cooperative there. And then they'll be working and structuring things together so it'll help them build, build their own lifestyle, their own community there and be a good benefit to our local community.
Councilman Dabney?
Yes, I understand where Councilman Presley is coming from because when this first came up to us, we were asking, could there be a guarantee that these, that these homes would be offered to Michigan City residents? We were big on that, trying to make that happen and we could not get a guarantee of that. So that was a little disappointing because I believe that we have the people from the city of Michigan City that would be able to fill those units up. And then taking into, kind of hate to sound crude at this time, because this is a great project coming to the city. But, you know, our city controller got up and talked about what we're doing in terms of dollars and revenues that are coming into the city. We are starving for revenue and we really don't know what's going to happen here with what the state is trying to do to us as well. I talked about this, I think it was at the last meeting where they're cutting us off at the kneecaps. I see that going to happen. I don't think that's just a pie in the sky discussion. I think it's gone through either the House or the Senate, the House already. And I am sure it's going to go through the Senate where they're going to be capping us with property tax caps and we're going to be losing dollars. So like I said, I hate to sound crude, but as a councilperson, I'm in my tenth year, I really have to take into consideration the finances. That's number one these days with all of the things coming at us from every angle in terms of revenues coming in, dollars going out, and how we have to be stewards of that to the utmost level. So I'm a little torn here, but at some point, we are going to have to have a serious discussion about this regarding, you know, allowing waivers of fees and so forth. I know we've done it in the past, but those were different times. Like the chief of police said, you know, they're policing in different times and we're operating in different times now. So I just had to put that truth bomb out there so everybody could hear it. Because like I said, I'm torn with what's going on here.
Well, in response, I think two, two things. One is to the extent that we can identify that they are Michigan City residents, as long as they have an address here, as long as they have some connection to the community, however it is that they would fill out their application, that's certainly the desire and the intent of the board, and I think that we could build that into the whole project. It's, we're at the gestational stage of the whole project right now. You know, kind of putting the organization, the cooperative documentation together. So that's certainly something that could be a requirement of the application process itself. If they have identification, if they can identify themselves as members of this community, that's certainly something that we would be willing to do and and structure in there. And secondly, we are very thankful and appreciative of the city itself to contribute and finance through some of the funding mechanisms here to provide some of the funding for this opportunity. This is a nonprofit corporation helping with affordable housing, so it's not like a public or a for-profit development. There's subdivisions going in, they're making money, they're investing. All of the funding for this organization comes from donations and contributions. So it's to some extent defeating the purpose of the contribution to kind of cause the organization to have to pay money for that too. So we're trying to, the same way, we're trying to balance all the budget here because we don't have any other source of revenue for the, for the construction and the development here. So we appreciate the city's consideration very much in helping to fulfill this project here. But we can certainly make, and I know that's a very significant concern, we can build that into the bylaws of the cooperative organization and the application process to the extent that any applicant can identify Michigan City as a resident.
Yeah, and I didn't add in my, my little speech there that we have already given fifty thousand dollars out of the, yeah, the ARPA funds that we had, that we were awarded from the federal government. So we've already donated fifty grand to the the project. And now, like I said, like Councilwoman Maldonar said here, that we will now be at about sixty-six thousand total, including the sixteen thousand dollar waiver of fees and here.
And we appreciate that very much.
And if I could ask, so the amount that's being requested for the permits to be waived currently, those permits have already been paid for, so you're really seeking to be reimbursed for those?
No, we haven't received any permits yet.
You have not obtained any permits since of yet?
No. We're in the process, so we're working with all the building departments, sewer department, water department, but we haven't got our permits.
And again, I concur with Councilman Dabney and with controller, the controller, the controller in regards to the city finances, in regards to where we are presently as well. This is a need. However, again, we do have to be mindful in regards to our revenues and bringing in revenues and with the developments that we do have coming within the city and things of that nature. Again, as has been stated, I think it'll probably be repeated in regards to what we've done in the past to where we are now, not to open things up for any other future requests at this time for any other developers to be seeking us, request to waive any type of permits at this time.
This is, you know, as we mentioned, this is a nonprofit organization, so we're not a for-profit developer coming in, putting in subdivisions, making money, selling houses. We're here to help the community. So to the extent that we're receiving funding and grants and support from so many different organizations, including the city, we're very thankful for that part, for the county, for Unity Foundation and so forth, all these different organizations. So we're just a little bit more by way of a permit because we have no other source of making money on it. It's not a profit venture, it's here to help the community, so we'd appreciate your consideration for that.
Thank you, and I understand that as well. But I also was in attendance and on council at that time too, when there was the discussions when this first came to us as well. And for me and for my constituents, I think it would be best if we would have had some form of commitment that it is open, that Michigan City residents, our locals, would be able to, and I know that we went back and forth in regards to this language or if it was going to be in there, but because the board, your board has not derived or put those things together as of today's time, we still don't have the surety that that's.
But we can make that a condition of the, of the resolution that we would build those requirements into the application process and into the, to the bylaws of the organization. So we'd be happy to do that.
Dr. Cora?
Madam President, thank you very much. I was going to ask Councilwoman Maldonar if she, considering this discussion and what we heard from the controller, if maybe we could waive fifty percent of this fee rather than the entire amount? If you would consider something like that?
Okay, there are two things I want to address before I answer your question. First of all, thank you for being here this evening to answer questions and to state to the extent that you're able to answer questions that have been brought up. I have had conversations with your exec, executive director, Sandy Keller, and she has said that she's committed to filling that residence with people from Michigan City. You can't actually make a guarantee because if those people aren't available, then you can't have empty spaces in a residential unit, okay? I also talked to social workers that were there the day of the groundbreaking ceremony from nonprofits that were there. And specifically, the social worker from the Salvation Army said there are two to three to four times the number of people from Michigan City that would qualify for this facility. So Sandy and she saw no issue with filling that residence with Michigan City people, okay?
Correct.
So that's the part of that. The other thing I want to mention is when this project was first introduced to me, what I was excited about is somebody was going to actually buy that property and build something which is right next door to the HUD public housing. So I couldn't imagine anybody ever buying that property and being willing to put a structure on that. So your organization, your nonprofit, has actually provided a service to our community by taking on a property that probably nobody else would even touch. So I want to acknowledge you for that, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, and Dr. Cora, I think I will respectfully decline at this point, just knowing how close their budget is. I have insider knowledge to that because I've worked with them for a very long time, that they are just dollars and pennies this close to being able to continue with the build, okay?
So just so you guys are all aware, we're doing this in two phases because we're not fully funded at this point. So all the, all the help that we can get would be greatly appreciated. So this first phase will get us up six total units. So we're really working towards funding everything in the project.
Councilman Chris Balinski?
Yeah, I guess this, this is a continuation of council comments too. So I'm going to say that I was in the initial discussions back one night when this first council first came on and I was the president of the council and I was approached by Sandy Keller. She spoke to me, spoke to the mayor about this, and that was one of my concerns more than a year ago is, is this going to be just for Michigan City residents? That's one of the questions I came up with. And back then, she kept saying, well, I'll have to talk to the board, I'll have to talk to the board and see what they have to say and see what they have to say. And I never got a clear, concise answer that this was going to be just for Michigan City residents. And that's why I have reservations as far as funding any amount. And especially when the city controller gets up at a council meeting, like Councilman Dabney alluded to, that's the first time the city controller ever got up at a council meeting and said, we need all the funds that we can get. You know, we're looking at property tax caps, which is going to cut millions of dollars off of our budget, and we're all made aware of that already. We have people that want raises. We have police cars that have to be bought. We have fire trucks that have to be bought. And it all adds up at the end of the day. And that's why, you know, let your heart be your guide. But we also have to look at the concerns of running the operation of Michigan City for all thirty thousand residents that live here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And what I can guarantee is that as a board member, I will make that motion to the board to include those requirements in the bylaws of the cooperative organization that's set up and the application process so that, again, to the extent that we have the applicants and they can identify themselves as Michigan City residents, then that will be a requirement and a priority to facilitate those, those residents to come into the community. And I can give you that guarantee.
Councilman Deirdre?
I know we would never, never consider a request like this if it came from a for-profit, only a not-for-profit. Initially, years ago, I was not for waiving any fees at all, but then I got involved closely with Art Space. They're, they were a five oh one C three, and I remember sitting on this council and then asking for a waiver of fees for them. The problem that I think I'm having, and also, I was at the Community Enrichment Awards Program along with Councilman Chris Balinski and listened to thirty-some organizations that are just working as hard as they can to resolve some of the difficulties that we have in this community, and one of them is homelessness. And this would address that. The problem I think I'm having a little bit on this is that there was a fifty thousand dollar donation to your organization, and I don't know that at that point anyone said, and also, we'd like you to waive fees. I would like to, I think, have heard that request then, because this almost sounds like a second request for funding from the council above the fifty. But it's a hard thing to decide because you are a five oh one C three. It is a worthy organization and you will be helping people, I think, from Michigan City that are, that are in dire straits. So I, I think the one issue that's out there for me is that fifty thousand dollars and now an additional sixteen. That's the only thing that's having me go back and forth. And I do appreciate Mary coming forward because that is a key issue to you.
And from our board perspective, when we received the fifty thousand dollars, we didn't know the, the permit fee cost and so forth. So I think that's something that's come up as we've been applying for the permits and working with, with construction, at least from the board perspective.
Councilwoman Maldonar?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate our controller coming this evening and all of my city councilperson for expressing concerns, you know, regarding the city budget. I do understand that. I know what's going on in Indianapolis and I know it doesn't look the greatest at this point in time. And I just want to remind everybody that the original request from Homeward Bound Carwick Villages was for one hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so I want to bring that to everybody's conscience, consciousness that that was the request. So we did half that when we actually awarded the funding.
I would like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
I second.
Point of order. I don't, I know that they got up and talked about it, but we didn't have public comment, you know?
I did, Mary spoke, she was the only one that spoke. Mary Lynn was the only one that spoke.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I did, I said public comment.
I know that.
No, I asked for a public comment and she stood up and spoke under public comment.
We're not through, we want to free.
On this matter? You are correct. Point of order acknowledged. Public comment on this resolution?
Yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen and sixteen Ohio State. First of all, I want to express how thoroughly I enjoyed attending their groundbreaking ceremony two weeks ago. My favorite part is we've. My favorite part is we read from the Book of Ecclesiastes, chapters three, verses one through fourteen, and we recited the Lakota Indian, uh, four dreschel prayer. We prayed to Brother Eagle to the east, and Brother Wolf to the south, and Brother Brown Bear to the west, and Brother White Buffalo to the north, and gave homage to the Indians, the original inhabitants of that land. I gotta say, that's gonna be a lot nicer than what you've already had there, like Councilwoman Maldonar alluded to. I know this isn't no different than what you did last year when you gave way the permit fees for the nest shelter, and you waived the permit fees for the auto shop, new, uh, on Ohio twenty for the school system. I know the previous council waived the fees for the Little Wolves Early Learning Center, so I think this is a, a very worthy cause. I, I hope you all pass it, and I'd like more, maybe we add more cosponsors with Councilwoman Law and Councilwoman Culture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sal Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. This seems to come down to a, which street is more dire? One of you said we're in dire straits. Come, I'm, my background is in housing, dealing with nonprofits. And I thoroughly understand the stress nonprofits go through in terms of trying to get that last squeeze, that last dollar out of whatever direction or source that they can get it from. And I want to appeal to you to really think hard about this, not dismissing all of the, the, the issues that are facing the city in terms of, uh, short, financial shortcomings. But this is something that I, I'm, I'm in support of, and I hope that you will consider it, and with the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Public comment. This will be the last public comment on this resolution.
Paul Priszbalansky, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Hearing all the debate and comments from the council, I would like to give you a instrument to satisfy your needs. I think that you should table this to the next meeting, and somebody needs to go to that board and say, this is what we need. But also, since the county council contributed money, I think the whole thrust should be LaPorte County residents, okay? And I think that's a admirable way to get some equity for you and for the people of LaPorte County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priszbalansky. Counsel, coun, counsel, uh, public comments are now closed. Is there a, any comments from the council? There are none? Is, I would like to entertain a motion on this resolution.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Dr. Cora and a second by Councilwoman Lee. Madam Clerk, on the vote?
Mr. Priszbalansky?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have five in favor and three opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, oh, Madam Clerk, on title only, on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the General Fund zero one zero one for the Vector Control Department. This is introduced by Ms. Maldonar, Mr. Priszbalansky, and Ms. Tillman.
Do the sponsors have any comments? Councilwoman Priszbalansky?
Sure. Uh, what this is for is to, uh, decrease from the general fund and increase certain accounts, one being the seasonal salaries and wages for seventy-five thousand, increased account, uh, FICA for five thousand, five thousand for small repair parts, and ten thousand for small tools and minor equipment for the Vector Control Department to take over, uh, grass cutting and, yeah, lawn care for, uh, the redevelopment commission and to upgrade their equipment in order to take care of that.
Do any other sponsors have any comments? Councilwoman Maldonar?
Um, this was, um, done last year, so it's a repeat this year that the city is actually paying itself to have these, um, grasses cut, which I think is a good precedent and a good way to continue adding to the city's budget instead of having this go to a third-party contractor, which means those funds would leave the city treasury.
I will open this up for public comment on this ordinance on first reading. Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? There are none. This will be held over for second reading. Madam Clerk, on, by title only, ordinance on second reading, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section one oh two dash one in the Michigan, Michigan State Municipal Code, commonly known as removal of weeds, grass, and ranked vegetation. And this is introduced by Ms. Maldonar.
Does the sponsor has any comments?
Um, yes, I would like to make a couple of comments, please. Um, first of all, we did take into account, um, the five-day consecutive period, and, um, I have introduced an amendment that will exclude holidays, weekends, and also days that the city offices are closed. Okay, so the, um, counting of the time will not begin until, um, the, the part, the event, the party not complying has been notified, and then, um, the count begins then. I also want to add that I've heard from other city council, another city councilperson that they thought the three-day, um, recommendation by Scott Mellon was, uh, inappropriate and one that could be easily implemented. And, um, in regards to that, um, I have asked Michael Wolfe and our city forester and also Brett Kelly from Vector Control to be here if anybody had any questions about this, um, because this was authored by, um, city staff.
Point of order, I believe, Attorney Snow. Because this was tabled, do we have to pull this, take it off the table?
It's okay.
I think it was tabled over to this meeting for discussion, so if you, it, it would, I mean, it would be a formality. I think it's, it's, if you want a complete record, I suppose you would make a motion to bring it back for discussion, but it's been placed on the agenda in this meeting. I mean, I think it's sufficient to to state that the intent of the council was to discuss it tonight.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Snow.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not at this time, but Councilwoman Maldonar had, uh, an amendment, and so do I, and my amendment was printed out this morning and distributed to the, not printed out, but emailed out to the council, and then Councilwoman Maldonar later in the day submitted her amendment, okay? Which is basically word for word, except for a couple of sentences in my amendment that were added. So now, we're looking at kind of the same issue we did at the last council meeting. We got two different amendments sitting here on the table, and, you know, how do we vote one in and vote one out? Uh, I know that mine includes a little bit more definition than what Councilwoman Maldonar does, and do we have the opportunity to read our amendments, which I believe we do, because we're sponsoring the amendments?
Attorney Snow?
Because I know that she did invite, she did invite Mr. Wolfe up here to discuss it, but...
Okay, I understand. So Attorney Snow, if I can direct that to you, um, for your guidance on, should we hear both of those amendments?
I think that when you are looking at an amendment to an ordinance, and this is an issue that we've litigated for a different municipality, so I've, I've got some background in this. I think that when you're looking at an amendment to an ordinance that comes up on second reading, right, which is where we're at, what you're looking for is the substance of the amendment, and, and whether or not the, the second version of the ordinance is so materially different than the first one that you have to almost go back to first reading and start over. Does that make sense? So in this case, I think that you're looking at amendments to procedures. I do agree that, um, just at least in my review of this, and I'm not the one that drafted the revision, so I'm, I'm having to read two pages, and I'm not always the best at that. But I think that what you're dealing with is procedural guidance. And, and even at that, I think, with the exception of some extra language, talking about the General Assembly and the, the language that the General Assembly used to uh, kind of suggest electronic service as a, as a means of, of accomplishing service. Uh, other than that, I think that the two versions are substantially the same.
Right.
Correct? It's just one extra whereas clause that appears in yours. So, I mean, at the end of the day, you're, you're going to, if you're going to move this ahead to third reading, or if you're gonna try to adopt it, you're going to have to reach some consensus on an amended version. So whether we accomplish that by discussion, and we say one person withdraws their amendment, so we go with the other one? Or I guess whether potentially we make a motion to accept one version, and then that one gets voted down, and so we make a motion to accept the other one? Uh, I think, I think either of those two ways are probably procedurally acceptable. I think one's a little more efficient than the other one. But ultimately, I mean, obviously, ultimately, you gotta pick one version. And I, and again, I don't think substantially they're different enough that it, it really makes a difference in how the thing moves forward. I think it's just we have to clearly identify what the council is ultimately voting on and either approving or disapproving.
Madam President?
Dr. Cora?
What I was going to suggest was if bo, if both of these could be explained, and then the council, uh, can be asked which version, uh, they want, uh, one after another, and then that's how we'll vote on it, and that way we'll quickly come to a resolution.
And, and/or, if I can make another recommendation, due to that, we do have two amendments, and these amendments was provided to the council via email from the clerk's office, an hour, hour and a half, two hours prior to the meeting, so I would like to make sure that all council members have had the opportunity to go over both of the, um, amendments that has been presented to us this evening, and to make a recommendation to table, to table this to the next council meeting, so that we can get clarity and that the two, um, sponsors can, um, discuss this as well, as far as merging their changes together, and so that we just have one form that we would, be presented to the council for the amendment.
Should to table.
Support.
We have a motion to table by Dr. Cora and a second by, uh, Councilman Beatry.
Madam President, but can I, can I explain my support for that? Because I don't know who else. I didn't get power at home until like an hour before this meeting, so I, I hadn't seen either one of these. Because I, I didn't have access to them on the computer. And I know Dr. Cora was in the same condition. I don't know about you guys, but I know there's still other people out there that don't have power. That's why I supported his motion to table, because I'd like to look at these.
Okay, and, and that, that, thank you for, um, elaborating on that as well. So we do have a motion on the table to table this by Dr. Cora and a second by Councilman Beatry. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please?
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Prisz, Priszbalansky?
Aye.
We have eaten favor and no one opposed. Table till the next meeting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on new business?
Um, for information, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Mission of Sustainability incumbent Andrea Jane Davis. Term expires May first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Clerk, on unfinished business?
Nomination, uh, nominations will uh, be this evening. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City Scholarship Review Committee incumbent Elia King. Term expires May first, twenty twenty-five. An application was received by Kamisha Williams.
I would like to open up nominations for the Michigan City Scholarship Review Committee. Application that we have received, Kamisha Williams. Madam Clerk, do we have any other applications for this?
No, we do not.
Is, may I entertain a nomination?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support it.
We have a first by Dr. Cora and a second by Councilman, um, Dabney. This, um, a voice. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please? Due to that, we only have one nominee.
Right. Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Priszbalansky?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have eight, um, votes for Kamisha Williams, and she is our next appointment.
And congratulations to Kamisha Williams. You have been officially appointed to the Michigan City Scholarship Review Committee. We are now opening up for comments from the public. Comments from the public. Please state your name and your address, and your, uh, comments are three minutes. Thank you.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I have a public service announcement to make. This is for your more upwardly mobile, wannabe success in life, teenagers, young adults, college students. Maybe if you're a little bit older and a good swimmer, this is for the mid-life guards. Michigan City, Washington Park, lifeguards needed. Requirements: Must have a valid driver's license. Must pass drug screening. Must pass a prerequisite swim test prior to hire date. Test date to be determined. Must currently be certified in a lifeguard or enrolled in a lifeguarding class of Alpreza and LaPorte YMCA, currently offering lifeguard classes. Applications to be picked up here at City Hall, one hundred East Michigan Boulevard, or down at the Michigan City area, uh, Michigan City Fire Department Administration Building and Training Center, right by Michigan Boulevard. We all know where that's at. If you need more information, send a message, contact us at two one nine eight seven three one four four zero, extension four four zero. As Barrett said earlier, that's our Public Information Officer, Tia Free. She does a great job in doing all that and handing our application. She actually writes grants from, get our fire, members of fire department, their equipment, whatnot. I think she deserves more than a thousand dollar annual stipend on top of her base, being, being a firefighter, for doing all that. But this is almost thirty dollars an hour they pay. I know Mayor Perry put that in about four years ago. Now, that's one of the good things he did. So other than that, I will, well, thank you, and that'll conclude my public comment for tonight. I wish you all a very pleasant good evening. Peace be with you. Smoke and detectors save lives, and I'm Len O'Connor.
Hello again. My name is Sal Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. One, I inquire about Mrs. Sherviak and whether or not the city ever recognized that lady. I thought she was such an outstanding contribution to the operation of the clerk's office. Tom Feder was there, but we all knew. Tom Fetter was there, but we all knew who really knew what was going on in that. If she hasn't, I just want to take one minute to, to acknowledge her, my appreciation for her kindness, her thoroughness, and she was just a complete servant to this community. Two, I, I, I serve on the Human Rights Commission along with the police chief. We have agreed to follow up on an idea that I presented to you all once before regarding a concept called painting the town red in which red flower seeds or seeds that would grow red flowers would be passed out to residents. It's not only a beautification concept, but it's also a psychological idea, a psychological activity in which I see you growing red flowers around the corner from me or down the street. It draws a connection. We have some identity with each other, even if we never really meet. But it leads to other things in terms of, well, we share that in common, we're willing to participate in this little simple act as a way of contributing to the community. It can lead to other forms of, of connecting. Thirdly, how would you like to have this place filled with folk taking notes of what you're saying? Young folk. And I'm proposing this through the Human Rights Commission as I presented it today. The idea that we try to attract young folk by going to all of the places of worship and asking them to identify two or three people who's going to assume the responsibility of going to the various meetings that take place in the city and reporting back to their place of worship along with the church announcements. There will also be community announcements about what's happening. And it's just a way of getting the word out, getting the message out to the community with the hope that it's going to encourage and pique their interest in wanting to get more involved. Would you appreciate something like that? Thank you. All of you said yes. Well, we're going to try to make that happen. I think it'd be extremely good for us. Got my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Paul Prisbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I'm going to read from, from ordinance 4295 and it's, it's about removal of weeds and grass and ranked vegetation. It says on, on page two, on manner of service of initial notice. An initial notice sent to the property owner must be sent by first-class mail or equivalent service permitted under IC 117-1. The owner of real property, at, at least if it has dual ownership, at least one, and owners of real, excuse me, property with multiple owners, the notice shall be sent to the last address of the owner for the property as indicated to the records of LaPorte County Auditor. Now, and then it goes on to say equivalent service, which is explained by IC code, and it has the first one, delivering a notice in person to the person to whom the notice must be given. Okay. And then it goes on, leave a copy of it at the dwelling and then posting a notice in a conspicuous place. I would like, I would want to see the council work on amending and leaving section B and C out and leaving A and making section D, section B, send by first-class mail a copy of the notice to the last known address of the person to whom the notice must be given. And then section E, make that section C, serving the agent of the person to whom the notice must be, must be given as provided by rule statute and valid agreement. And I would imagine that's a property manager. Because I believe that under the policy that they're working right now is that, we talked about it earlier, that they're leaving something in the door and that it shouldn't be a loose letter. It should be something because this is a citation, a violation. So somebody needs to know what's going on, or even if they're accepting mail at that address, to find the owner. And, and that's all I have to say about that ordinance that you want to amend right now. I think it needs to be scrutinized a little bit and made more workable so the people who are doing the enforcement don't violate the code and put a notice in there and if it's gone. Or they don't even, they post something, they don't even know who owns the property. So then they try to bill somebody and they can't bill nobody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Ms. Prisbalinski. Last call for a public comment. Their public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Beatry.
I mentioned this earlier that the Enrichment Corporation had its award banquet on March 20th and that Council, Councilwoman Prisbalinski and I and Councilwoman Molyneux were in attendance. And over 30 grant recipients got awards, some got more than one, but $647,000 was awarded to 501(c)(3) in Michigan City that are all working hard to serve those needs that our people have. And kudos to them. It was a great, it was a long ceremony because a lot of rewards were given out, but that's a good thing. And Ron Miller and his, his board do a great job.
Any other council comments? Any other council comments? There are none? May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Everyone, have a good evening.